Good morning and welcome to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting. And this morning, we have new procedures, so that will be exciting, our new procedures. And with that, we do have a hybrid meeting, and we have Commissioner White, who is appearing virtually. Will everybody please rise and give the -- for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation given by Commissioner White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll ask everyone if you're able to stand, that you please do so at this time for the pledge and invocation. We'll begin with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions about a finite resource. I pray that you will help us to see both the property rights of the landowner, but also the impact to neighbors, and in some cases, future generations. As always, Lord, I pray for members of our armed forces and our first responders. Pray that you'll guide them, keep them safe each and every day. I ask for these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. And with that, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Good morning. Kemp?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum?
Thank you. And as well, we have Mr. Grady, representing Development Services, I believe. And so, Mr. Grady, if you could go through withdrawals, continuances, and remands, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services. Before we go through the published withdrawals and continuances on the published agenda, we do have four changes to the published agenda. The first change is on Agenda Page 5, Item B3. This is Henderson Road and Limeby Avenue Improvements. It's revising the address from Henderson Road and Limeby Avenue Improvements to Henderson Road and Limeby Avenue Improvements. And the second change is to Agenda Item Page 11, Item E2, Application PRS 21-0254. Staff is requesting this item be continued to the July 20th, 2021 Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting at 9:00 a.m. The third change is on Page 11, the Agenda Item E3, PRS Application 21-0357. Staff is requesting this item be continued to the July 20th, 2021 Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting at 9:00 a.m. And the fourth change on the agenda is an off-agenda item that will be taken up as part of the staff items. It's regarding a report regarding the potential acquisition of the county of Estory Lakes Drive in accordance with the terms outlined in the backup that was provided to the Board on Friday. Those are the changes to the agenda. I'll now go through the published withdrawals and continuances, beginning on Page 3 of the agenda. First item is Item A1, rezoning PD 18-0996. Staff is requesting this be continued to the July 20th, 2021 BSCC Land Use Meeting. Item A2, a PRS Application 21-0255. This application out of order to be heard is being continued to the July 20th, 2021 Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting. Item A3, a PRS 21-0259. Staff is requesting this item be continued to the July 20th, 2021 Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting. Item A4, PRS 21-0360. This applicant is requesting this item be continued to the August 10th, 2021 Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting. Item A5, PRS 21-0362. This applicant is requesting this item be continued to the July 20th, 2021 Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting. Item A6, PRS 21-0474. This application out of order is being continued to the July 20th, 2021 Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting. Item A7, PRS 21-0591. This application is out of order to be heard and is being continued to the July 20th, 2021 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. Item A8, PRS 21-0618. The applicant is requesting this item be continued to the August 19th, 2021 Board of County Commissioners Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing at 6:00 p.m. Item A9, PRS 21-0619. Staff is requesting this item be continued to the July 20th, 2021 Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting. And Item A10, CDD 21-0480. Staff is requesting this item be continued to the July 20th, 2021 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. And that concludes all withdrawals, continuances, and changes.
Approve the changes.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Overman to approve the changes, seconded by Commissioner Myers. And seeing no further comments, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Great. And now, we'll move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, and seconded by Commissioner Overman, to approve the consent agenda. And seeing no further comments, please roll call vote.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Great. If anyone out there has a B item, your item's been approved. The item's been approved. And with that, if we can, if I can ask the clerk, for anyone planning on testifying today, please raise your right hand and be sworn in by the clerk.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before we begin our first public hearings this morning, I'd like to take the opportunity to remind all of the speakers, including those participating in person at Saunders Library, and those participating remotely, of our meeting participation process. When it's your turn to speak, I will recognize you as a speaker. For those participating in person at Saunders Library, I ask that you respect our social distancing guidelines. Please remain seated, and please do not approach the podium to speak until I've called on you. Thank you. And we are now on the public hearing agenda. Mr. Grady, you're recognized.
The next item on the agenda is Agenda Item E1, a PRS Application 21-0060. The applicant is Williford Groves, LLC. The project is located 45 feet west of the intersection of Joe McIntosh Road and McMillan Hill Road. Commissioners, the request is for a modern modification of the PD to make a couple of changes to the project. The primary change is to modify the general site layout. I've shown on the -- if you could show the graphic. This graphic basically shows the changes. This is the existing site plan on the left, and then the showing the existing layout, and the graphic on the right is the proposed layout, showing the changes that are being made as part of this application. So primarily, the change is to the general site plan, they reconfigured the layout. The other modification is more of a clarification, the conditions of approval, to clarify for a required shelter space, that stormwater shelter space that the RV park is required to provide, is to clarify the metric for determining the amount of that shelter space. It was determined that the appropriate metric would be two residents per RV space. Therefore, the conditions have been calibrated to provide for the necessary shelter space and maximum capacity based on that metric. Based on those changes, staff is finding that recommending approval, subject to condition, and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I have the applicant signed up, actually. Mr. Norman, would you like to speak? You have 15 minutes.
Hi, my name is Matt Norman with Boggs Engineering. I'm actually here to support Mr. Horner, who's in person, who will do the main presentation.
Mr. Horner?
Madam Chair, good morning, and Commissioners. I'm Michael Horner, 14502 North Dale Mayberry Highway. Thanks, Brian. Representing Williford Groves, with me, as just introduced, is Mr. Matt Norman of Boggs Engineering. If Matt could be elevated as a participant on the graphics, that would be helpful. I will be very brief, Commissioners. I think Brian gave a distinctive summary here. My clients, Mr. Williford and his wife, Felice, have been working on this RV park for, I want to say, four to five years. Unfortunately, while this property is completely rezoned for an RV park for 48 acres in its entirety, we were restricted during that process, during transportation review, to only 108 RV lots. So we reduced it from 265 to 108. So now, we have a 48-acre zone, PD RV park, that can only be developed for 108 RV lots. Go to the graphic if you can, the site plan, Matt, please. So as Brian noted, that is the plan that was amended prior on the 48 acres. We removed all of those RV lots on the north section. We have clustered those on the west side, and then that became impractical, Commissioners, for a number of reasons, including design cost, efficiency, roadway, et cetera. The right side is the plan that's before you today. It has two phases, about 55 RV lots in each. That plan still has the same access, it's still restricted to 108. We now have a 400-foot buffer to the north property line, and it's a more efficient design. Staff has supported this, that's the primary reason for this. Secondary reason, and just as important, is a cost factor, and that is the storm shelter requirement. Unfortunately, the 611-110 section of your Land Development Code required 20 square feet, excuse me, 40 square feet per resident. The question was whether or not this would be single or double occupants. As you know, these are RV parks under 611-110, they're restricted to only four months, or 120 days per year. The requirement, and it's staff's calculation, of the 40 square feet per RV lot was of 4,300 square feet for a clubhouse, which is a storm shelter. That cost would have been in excess of $600,000 to $700,000. That would have killed the park. So over the last three months, to staff's credit, we continued this case a number of times, and we now have reached a compromise where we are meeting that 4,300 square feet. What we're doing via, Matt, if you can just take your cursor to the primary clubhouse, storm shelter, that is 2,400 square feet. And then, my client, on his own, drove to Wachula, Florida, found a corporation that manufactures and converts steel containers, and that has now been certified and accepted by hazard mitigation. So, Matt, if you can just show the three storage shelter proposed on the north side, and now we have three storage shelters on the south side. That makes up the balance of the total requirement under your 611-110 requirements for the storm shelter. So with that, we think it's fair, it's reasonable. This manufacturing facility actually converts these containers, designs them, puts the restrooms in, the electric, the utilities, and it's quite a creative solution, while still meeting the intent, and of course, the safety needs that hazard mitigation sections call for. This is not coastal high hazard. This is not on the coast. This is not in a flood zone, and not too many tornadoes through here, but we did want to make sure that we met those requirements, and we ask you to accept that condition as part of our approval. Mr. Williford drove from Plant City this morning with his lovely wife, Felice. He wanted to have just 60 seconds to give you his comment, and if you could allow him to speak just briefly, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we will go to proponent testimony, those in support.
Mr. Williford is coming up now. Yes, thank you.
Robert Williford, 908 Joe McIntosh Road, Plant City, Florida. Lifelong resident of Plant City. I just, this project that I'm trying to put together, I feel the Caboose Junction RV Resort will benefit Plant City, benefit Hillsborough County, taxes. People will come down from up north during the wintertime, go to the Strawberry Festival, they go to the State Fair, Busch Gardens, wherever they want to go. And then, they'll spend the money, and the Hillsborough County will receive the taxes off of that money, and then they go back north. And no children, and there will be very little, the park will be restricted to age limit, and also occupancy per unit, and there will be very little traffic along there. The school board will not be, no demand on the school system, there'll be no children in school, and I just feel like this project will be of benefit, it'll be a win-win for everybody concerned. Appreciate your help, whatever you can do. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any opponent testimony? Anyone there to speak against this? Hearing no --
We do not.
I'm sorry?
We do not.
Okay. And hearing no opponent testimony, I assume the applicant will waive rebuttal. And with that, I know Commissioner Cohen wanted to speak. Commissioner Cohen?
I just wanted to compliment the applicant on such a creative solution to a dilemma. I think this is the most creative thing I've seen anybody come up with in an awfully long time. So I'll move the item.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, and a second by Commissioner Overman. I thought the speaker did a good job of selling this application, and maybe he could do that more often. With that, I don't see any other comments to be made. And we have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Overman. If we could have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, Mr. Grady?
The next item is Agenda Item E4. As noted in the changes, E2 and E3 were continues. The next item is Agenda Item E4. It's CDD 21-0587, petition to expand the Hawkstone Community Development District. The petition is submitted by the CDD to expand the CDD by adding 180.25 acres to the CDD. The revised CDD would encompass approximately 371.44 acres, and is located east of Baum Boyett Road, and west side of Hobson Simmons Road, and south of Boyett Road and Baum. No objections to proceed, we were raised by renewing agencies. Staff finds the application meets the requirements of Chapter 190 Florida Statute to expand a community development district, and recommends approval. Staff's available for if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, do we have the applicant present?
The applicant is present.
Would the applicant wish to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the Board of County Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. My name is Dana Crosby Collier. I'm the attorney for the Hawkstone Community Development District, the applicant in this expansion application of the CDD. Our address is 1510 West Cleveland Street, Tampa, and I have been sworn. On behalf of the applicant's team, thank you to staff for all the assistance in processing the petition for expansion. As always, they've done a great job, and we're in agreement with staff's recommendation that the board grant the petition and amend that ordinance 2019-11 to expand the boundaries of the CDD. I have with me today the team, the applicant team, Bill Johnson of Rosetta for the District Manager, Tim Green, Chris O'Kelly, and Kami Corbett, and we are available to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you. And with that, do we have any proponent testimony? Proponent testimony? Do we have any opponent testimony? Anyone to speak against?
We do not.
And hearing no opponent testimony, I'm assuming that you'll waive your rebuttal. And with that, do we have a -- okay.
Second.
Commissioner Overman has made a motion, seconded by Commissioner Myers. And seeing no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Grady?
The next item is Agenda Item G1, rezoning, Application PD 19-1458. The applicant is Council Growers Incorporated, a Florida corporation. This is a rezoning request for 614 units on two parcels, 516 units will be on the north parcel, and 98 units will be on the south parcel. Commissioners, this is referred by the board at a prior BSCC meeting, was remanded by the board. At this time, I'll ask Michelle Heinrich, who's county staff, to go over the changes to the report that occurred since the last time, it was before the Board of County Commissioners.
Good morning, Michelle Heinrich, Development Services. Just to remind you, when we have the graphic located or shown right here on the Elmo, to refamiliarize yourself with the site, this is a rezoning of 327 acres from AR to PD. As you see, it does consist of two separate parcels with a transfer of density between the sites. The northern parcel will serve as the receiving area, and the southern parcel will serve as the sending area. Under our original review, we found that the project did meet the comprehensive plan and community plan requirements for clustering, mixture of uses, roadway network requirements, and housing variety. However, the planning commission staff did find that there was not a sufficient number of jobs and commercial establishments to find it consistent. Therefore, originally, staff did not recommend approval of the request. At the board meeting, this was remanded back to the ZHM to provide the applicant an opportunity to demonstrate how this requirement could be met. The applicant has provided a revised proposal that instead proposes this plan be addressed under the community benefits criteria, which is a pending comprehensive plan change and possible new LDC requirements. The remand offers the following changes. First, a multimodal trail along the west side of the northern parcel, and that would be available for public use. A five-acre park in the northern parcel also available for public use. Commitment to provide water and sewer connections to the school parcel located in the southern area. To provide 50 affordable housing units in the northern parcel. And then, lastly, to remove the previous request for a design exception to County Road 579, and instead replace it with a condition that commits to certain improvements, and allows a future design exception if necessary for other requirements. There was no change in the number of units, the density transfer, the general layout, or the access points. Planning commission staff still finds the proposal inconsistent, and the school board has changed the review comment to no longer support it. Therefore, Development Services does not support the remand proposal, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. And with that, we can move, at this point, to applicant oral argument of 10 minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kami Corbett with the law firm of Hillward Henderson, representing the applicant Council Growers, Inc. As staff did a great job of summarizing both the changes that we made prior to the remand hearing, and the issue that was intended to be addressed at the remand hearing. There's a fundamental disagreement between the applicant team and the planning commission regarding the correct interpretation of Policy 48.1. The planning commission contends that the comprehensive plan requires jobs to exist at the time of a rezoning. It's our position, based on the legislative history of the plan, that this plan policy was intended to be a locational requirement that established the areas where commercial development can be located, and requires a tracking mechanism for approved residential developments to provide the data to establish that there are enough people residing in the area to support the commercial activity. We've established a compelling record in support of our interpretation. The record includes testimony from the council family and the Davis family, both of whom were so involved with the drafting of the community plan, that Pat Council and Wayne Davis presented it on behalf of the working group to the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners when the plan was approved. The record also includes the transcripts from the first rezoning case in 2010 that implemented the plan. Those transcripts provided valuable insight into the intent of the drafters and the interpretation of the planning commission at that time. By contrast, the planning commission has presented no additional testimony or evidence in the record to support their interpretation. They simply repeat that it is their interpretation that the jobs must exist at the time of the rezoning. This interpretation is the subject of an ongoing lawsuit with the county, and likely will ultimately be sided by a judge. With respect to new testimony and evidence on the jobs issue offered at the remand hearing, Steve Lutz of Eisenhower Property Group provided testimony that thousands of jobs will be created in conjunction with this development of the subdivision and the construction of the homes. He also provided testimony that this development will generate enough demand to support anywhere from 15,000 square feet to 30,000 square feet of commercial development, depending on type of development that occurs. As Michelle indicated, we are offering several community benefits that are guided by the ongoing planning effort in the WVR2 and the community plan. We are not suggesting that they are in lieu of satisfying the jobs requirement, because it is our interpretation that the jobs requirement interpretation from the planning commission is incorrect. We are offering these as a benefit to the community in good faith should the board support our rezoning application. There was no one who spoke in opposition at the zoning hearing, master hearing. There are some emails in the record, but none provided any testimony or evidence regarding the jobs or services requirement. Nearly all of them object on the basis of generalized concerns about growth in South Hillsborough County. At the conclusion of the remand hearing, it was clear once again that the only disagreement amongst the experts in this case regarding compatibility and consistency of this rezoning application is the interpretation of the jobs requirement. The expert testimony otherwise establishes that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan, is compatible with the surrounding area. We are aware from the last hearing that several of you, perhaps even a majority of you, feel that evidence does exist in the record to support a denial for other reasons, such as transportation concerns or utility or school capacity. However, the evidence in the record reflects that all of the roads in the surrounding area operate at an acceptable level of service, which is even higher in the rural service area. We are also improving the roadway network, and will be paying significant mobility fees, both of which will aid and relieve some of the transportation problems in the area. Issues related to the availability of public utilities and schools are implemented through your Land Development Code, which expressly prohibits development from occurring if adequate schools and adequate utilities are not available at the time of preliminary subdivision plan approval. Therefore, it's our position that those generalized concerns are not a proper basis for denial. Accordingly, I respectfully request that you approve the proposed application with the revised site plan and revised conditions as presented at the zoning hearing, master. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, do we have any proponent testimony? Proponent testimony? And do we have any opponent testimony?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. And the applicant didn't ask for rebuttal time, so I'm assuming that your time is waived?
Kami Corbett, for the record. My time is waived with respect to rebuttal. However, I would say that to the extent that there are substantive issues raised by Commissioners that are directly relate to this case, that we be provided rebuttal time. I know the board doesn't generally do that, but for the record, I wanted to make that request.
Okay, yeah, and I wouldn't be granting that. But we'll move now to our planning commission staff.
Yes, thank you. For the record, Melissa Linehart, Planning Commission Staff. The subject property is located within the limits of the Wy Mama Village Residential Two Future Land Use category. The site is located in the rural area, and also within the limits of the Wy Mama Village Community Plan and the South Shore Area Wide Systems Plan. As part of the request, the applicant provided an analysis to identify the non-residential entitlements located within the Wy Mama Community Plan boundary, and the entitlements that have been consumed thus far by previous applications within this future land use category. Additionally, the applicant provided a synopsis of other employment opportunities within a seven-to-11-mile radius of the proposed site, in which they feel demonstrates employment opportunities that would meet the demand of the residential development within the WVR2 Future Land Use category. Currently, there are no available jobs within Wy Mama to accommodate this planned development request. request. In order to comply with the employment requirements of WVR2, a total of 557 jobs would be needed to accommodate the 654 proposed dwelling units. Therefore, the request is inconsistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan. This request was remanded for the purpose of allowing the applicant an opportunity to address the employment requirements as outlined in the community plan. With this request, the applicant has provided supplemental information regarding community benefits, a concept that has been included in the draft documents created by the consultant in the WVR2 land use study that is currently in progress. The applicant is providing a multi-use trail, a five-acre public park, and a portion of the units are being reserved as affordable housing to meet the merits of community benefits. The WVR2 land use study draft document contemplates requiring community benefits in the place of the employment requirements that are currently adopted. The study is ongoing as the proposed language is still in draft form. The proposed language is scheduled to be heard by the Board of County Commissioners in August of this year, and Planning Commission staff acknowledges that the current draft does contemplate shifting away from employment requirements to community benefit requirements. However, the new language has not been adopted at this time. For that reason, Planning Commission staff cannot consider that material, the application, sorry, the applicant has submitted as part of our evaluation and can only rely on adopted policy language of the comprehensive plan. Overall, the proposed rezoning would allow for development that is compatible with the existing and planned development pattern found in the surrounding area and meets the intent of the Wyoma Community Plan and the future land use element policies with regard to residential development. The application has addressed some of the WVR2 requirements, such as open space and clustering. However, the application does not meet the full intent of the goals and strategies of the Wyoma Village Residential 2 requirements due to the lack of employment and services available within the Wyoma Village Community Plan limits. And based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed planned development inconsistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you. And now if we can have the zoning hearing master's recommendation.
On remand, the zoning hearing master considered the application for rezoning of 324.4 acres from agricultural rural to planned development to permit a maximum of 654 single-family detached homes on two parcels. The purpose of the remand, as the Board directed, was to have the applicant identify how jobs will occur and services will be provided in the Wyoma Village area. The Planning Commission, as you heard, does not support the request based on the project not meeting Policy 48.1 regarding the job opportunity provision and that those jobs be located in the Wyoma Village downtown area at the time of the rezoning. The Development Services Department also does not support the request as it is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, thereby resulting in the department recommendation to not support the requested planned development zoning district. The zoning hearing master stated that the applicant's representative submitted revisions in response to the Board of County Commissioners remand that address certain community benefits, but not the specific motion made by Commissioner Myers to identify how jobs will occur and how services will be offered in the Wyoma area. The Planning Commission staff testified that a study is currently underway to examine a community benefits component that would replace the jobs provision. However, that study and the accompanying draft language has not been approved by the Board of County Commissioners at this time. Therefore, the zoning hearing master evaluated the rezoning application based on the adopted provisions of the comprehensive plan, including Policy 48.1. The zoning hearing master stated that the county attorney, Assistant County Attorney, has affirmed that at the zoning hearing master hearing that the Board of County Commissioners has the authority to interpret the comprehensive plan and that the Board agreed with the Planning Commission's Executive Director that the interpretation that the jobs associated with the proposed dwelling units be in place at the, in the Wyoma Village downtown at the time of the rezoning. The planned development zoning, according to the zoning hearing master recommendation, does not comply with the WVR2 and the Wyoma Community Plan regarding the required jobs component, and the zoning hearing master therefore found the application inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and recommended denial.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move to Board discussion, and I'll recognize Commissioner White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said previously, I've had a change in position on the jobs requirement portion of this, of the, of the comp plan as it relates to WVR2. The applicant has offered community amenities as a, as a good faith gesture to go along with this rezoning request. I know that the, the family that, that owns this land and is the applicant has been in the area for a long, long time, many generations, in fact, cares a lot about the community, and I think that shows in the concessions that have been made. So I'm going to move approval of the item.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner White to move approval, seconded by Commissioner Hagan. And Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm obviously not going to support approval of this. WVR2 is a classification that allows for two-per-acre densities in the rural area where the density is generally one per five acres, so that's 10 times, 10 times the density, only if it can meet very specific conditions, which this application does not meet. And that is why all the reviewing agencies say no, and we should say no too. The zoning hearing master reviewed this. They reviewed everything that the developer just said, their attorneys said, and they said no. The Planning Commission staff reviewed it and reviewed it again on remand, and they said no. And the Development Services staff reviewed it, and they said no. Many of the citizens in the area are opposed to this, and their letters are in the case file, their testimony is on the record, they have, they have very moving reasons why this does not fit in to their community. Many, many of the conditions of WVR2 are not met here, not just the jobs, but let's start with the jobs. We remanded this for the failure to meet the requirement for jobs because, as the Planning Commission staff just told us, there are no available jobs in the area. There's specifically in the comp plan says they should have 557 jobs to put this many houses in the rural area and call it a rural village, which is what it's supposed to be if we give them 10 times their density in the rural area, in this area. It's supposed to be a self-contained little village, capturing the trips, providing their own urban services. That's the only reason we're supposed to approve sprawl, what would otherwise be sprawl. And the, the comprehensive plan is very clear, the Wyoma Plan is very clear, that, that this is only allowed with the specific conditions to prevent sprawl. The jobs aren't there at this time, neither is a lot of the infrastructure, so the timing is wrong for 654 more homes in the, in the rural area. And why does the jobs matter? Because if we don't have jobs in the local area, in the community, in the town center of Wyoma, at the time that we keep approving more and more residential, and there's been plenty residential already, we'll end up with this 800, 8,830 trips per day, 8,830 trips per day, more traffic on South County roads as these people commute to their jobs in Tampa every day. This traffic's going to end up in Tampa. This is the traffic problem that is ending up in Tampa as we approve more and more sprawl and, and villages in the rural, or subdivisions in the rural area of commuters. A commuter subdivision outside Wyoma of 654 homes doesn't become a part of Wyoma. It, it, it is just a separate piece where their homeowners association is their community, not Wyoma. The people of Wyoma wisely incorporated this jobs requirement into their plan, now in our comprehensive plan, so that Wyoma would grow in the right time with new growth becoming a part of their community and supporting their town center business, supporting businesses and, and having jobs in the town center if we are careful about timing growth with jobs. They were very specific about this, the Wyoma community, in, in, in saying this is how they want to grow their community. They didn't say no growth. They said they want growth to be a part of Wyoma in this way and support their businesses. The developer says, well, yeah, we're not, yes, we're not providing the jobs, we're not meeting that requirement that's in the comprehensive plan and in the Wyoma Community Plan, but we think that you all are going to change that later. We think you all are going to allow for community benefits instead, so we're jumping the gun and going to do some community benefits, and, and we think that, that even though we don't meet it, that, that's not the deal, okay? That's not the deal that's on the table. It's not meeting the specific conditions in our comprehensive plan that the developer has to make. And to be clear, when we get to the place of considering whether or not we're going to trade community benefits for jobs and for, for a timely growth of, of Wyoma, these community benefits they're putting in here are not going to satisfy me. A small piece of a trail, a very small five-acre park way outside Wyoma that the Parks Department doesn't even want. The Parks Department reviewed it, they said, we don't want this. And they offer some affordable housing way outside Wyoma that many of us have already said is the wrong place for affordable housing. Because why? Because there's no jobs. Because there's no jobs. So every single person in this affordable housing would have to find a way to afford a car to drive to Tampa for their jobs and services every day. Forget the jobs. Maybe you like a, a park and a trail instead of jobs. There's no schools. There, there is no school capacity for these kids, and they've had previously offered a school site, and the school district has now reviewed it and said they do not approve this school site. So our comprehensive plan has other, other requirements in it for timing growth with infrastructure like schools. We are not supposed, we, we are state mandated to manage growth concurrently with school capacity, and we don't have that here. And we don't have any approval from the school district saying that, that they're on board with this. In fact, they say they're not on board with this. This is the worst kind of sprawl. It's adding burdens of development to our overburdened infrastructure in South County on every front, from roads to water to school to fire. We have tons of opposition from the people of South County pointing that out. The timing is wrong on every count, and so I'm going to make a substitute motion for denial.
Second.
We have a substitute motion by Commissioner Smith, and it's seconded by Commissioner Overman. At this time, I don't see any other Commissioners that want to speak to the substitute motion. Well, I'll just say, I think that Commissioner Smith has again laid out this case. I mean, we have had this before us, those of us who have been on here longer, three or four times. As Commissioner Smith stated, the, its denial on all of the commissions and all of the reviews that have, have looked at this particular case, the zoning hearing master, denial. Development Services, not supported. Planning Commission, inconsistent. Schools have reviewed it again now and said it's, they no longer desire this for a school site. Again and again, and I think Commissioner Smith has, again and again, explained this so well, but what we have is one per every five acres that is allowed. If you want to develop that tomorrow, you can do that tomorrow, and that's, that's what's out there. If you want to have this very special exception, and I think they did this wisely when they did it back in the 90s, if you want to have this very special exception, you have to, they were thinking about like, kind of, out in the country villages that are in a little, you know, pod, that have some kind of community. They were trying to, I think, try to figure out how, when these are no longer seemingly organically being built, that they could allow for this to happen in the rural area, a rural little town center. And so they created in our, this was part of a settlement agreement, this was, became part of our comprehensive plan to, to allow in the rare instance that a developer comes in there and says, hey, we're going to like make a little town center here. And I've seen this happen in other places, by the way, in, and I know Commissioner Overman also grew up in Maryland, and I've been back there, I have a big family, and there's places out around the DC Baltimore area where they've done just this. But we have developers that are just interested in single-family residents and sprawl, and so they are just looking for that development pattern, not the one that this says is allowed in this rare exception. And I would love to see some of these villages get developed, but it's probably going to take a different kind of person that's, company that's interested in doing that development, which would be beneficial to the community there, beneficial to us, and set a growth pattern that would be an appropriate growth pattern to allow this. In, on top of that, not only do we have this in our comprehensive plan, and I say Objective 48, in order to avoid a pattern of development that could contribute to urban sprawl, it is the intent of this category to designate Wyoma Village Residential 2 areas inside the boundaries of the Wyoma Village Plan that are suited for agricultural development in the immediate horizon of the plan right now, but it may be suitable for expansion of the village as described in the plan. This is speaking to timing of growth, when it's appropriate, when they can do this village, when we have some developers or many that are interested in doing that kind of development, we can get that going and we won't have the, you know, craziness of, of this trip capture, these job opportunities. This undermines a whole plan. Not only, not only that, Commissioner Myers, I've heard you say many times, a deal's a deal. And I'll tell you, with these community plans, and you probably know this from having been here, but I know Commissioner Smith didn't talk about this, but she was heavily involved in the Wyoma Community Plan, going there and being part of that. And people, and I know as a staff for then Commissioner Castor, when I was her staff, I went down to different, in, it was District One, and so I participated in the community planning of Town and Country and of Apollo Beach. And lots of people, and I also went down to the Ruskin Community Plan is how I met Commissioner Smith. Spent my time in the evenings going down and seeing what community members were saying. 50, 60 people from that community who deeply cared and were involved in all the community activities and worked at those communities would be there, and they went through this. But who was also there were these same developers. They were there. They could have said something at the time like, this won't work, or, you know, we can't do this, or we object, or whatever. They didn't. Those community plans were set in stone in our policy, those are part of our laws, our rules, those are the deals that were made. Those are the deals that were made. Anybody could have come before this board. I was an aide to a commissioner who sat here and approved those with that deal, having been forged by months and months of community involvement and working on this. There is no way that we should now back out on this deal for the future until and unless we make a new deal that is forged from the work of these communities. And so, you know, I think it's very clear, I'll be supporting this motion, and it's really important that we do that here, that we stand up for all of that involvement, all of that community belief, all of these years, decades of people that have, you know, forged these documents and made our rules here and had this plan in place. And I think it's a wise plan that we should be adhering to and respecting, and I think it's a good plan for moving to the future. And this, we'd throw it out the window if we allow this. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. And you were sort of moving actually in there in the direction that I wanted to speak for just a moment without getting into a lot of the substantive issues that have been brought up. I have some real concerns, questions about whether or not moving forward with the type of jobs requirement that we have currently in the WVR2 is such a great idea. I know it's the subject of pending litigation, and, you know, I just think that from a public policy point of view, there's a lot of arguments that could be had about whether it's the right way to move forward or not. But you've heard me say before, when we've had conversations, when we talk about undoing past decisions, that a deal is a deal. And in fact, the reason that we have extended the moratorium, the reason we are spending so much time working on this is because we are going to be making a full and comprehensive review and maybe making some changes. But until those changes are made, the law that's in place is the law that's in place. And, you know, the community benefits that are offered here, Commissioner Smith said that they wouldn't be satisfactory to her. I don't know if they'd be satisfactory to me or not, but I do know that part of the process that we're going to go through as we work through the regulations is what are the community benefit standards that we would require in order to no longer have the jobs requirement? And we haven't defined that yet. So I can't, I can't in good conscience move ahead with approving something even if the community benefits are robust because we haven't yet changed the policy that makes that permissible. The other thing I just wanted to say is related to the schools issue. I know that we are in a situation where school capacity decisions ultimately get made at the time of permitting. However, it's very clear from the record here that there are grave concern, I have never, I don't even remember the last time I saw the school board raise something that even appeared to be an objection to an application. So the fact that they even weighed in with this little bit, I think, is somewhat significant. But again, my real issue is that the exception that we're being asked to make goes to the very heart of the work that we are currently doing. And until we're done with it, the rule exists as it is. And that is the state of play in terms of getting the kind of density bonus that's being asked for here.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wasn't going to speak on this item because at the last meeting when this item was discussed, I sent it back so that we can come up with the jobs so the developer would have the opportunity to present again to us how they were going to come up with 557 jobs. And hearing this this morning, it's still not there, the opportunity for people to be employed and make the economy grow is just not there. So I'll leave it there.
Thank you. And seeing no further comments at this time, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith to deny, seconded by Commissioner Overman. Can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
No.
Myers.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
No.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Hagan and White voted no.
Thank you. Mr. Grady.
Thank you. The next item is again, item G2 is rezoning application 20-0374. The applicant is Johnny Greikal. The request is rezoned from residential duplex conventional 12 to commercial general with restrictions. Commissioners, this was before you at the last board meeting. You may recall it was continued in order to give the applicant the opportunity to clarify the use restrictions that they're going to propose for the project because, as you know, it had a recognition of not support from our staff inconsistency with the plan and denial by zoning here master based on those proposed restrictions. The applicant has clarified that use restriction. I'll read that in the record is what their new proposed restriction is. There's two proposed restrictions. The first one dealing with use is the use restriction is to allow only sales of domestic vehicles. Ancillary and accessory use will allow non-pressure washing and minor repair of vehicles only in regard to the vehicles that will be for sale on the lot and only for preparation for sale. The other restriction is a tree planting screening restriction along the southern property along Thomas Street, and that is on the south property line facing Thomas Street. The required trees will be placed every 10 feet versus 40 feet as required. Staff is available if you have any questions.
Thank you. And we will move now to, I'm sorry, the oral, the applicant? Is the applicant present?
Yes, I'm here. Good morning, Commissioners. Madam Chairman, Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, number 451 in St. Petersburg, Florida. Appreciate your time this morning. I do have a PowerPoint for you. If we can bring that up, please. We go to the first slide, please. Thank you. This is RZ 20-0374. Next slide, please. We're located in the Sefner Mango area. Next slide, please. It's composed of these two parcels on Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Next slide, please. Commissioners, we heard your feedback from a month ago, and we have moved forward with a significant restriction for the sales of domestic vehicles that will be the only use. And of course, only regard to that use would be ancillary accessory, non-pressure washing, and strictly minor repairs, but only for the vehicles that will be for sale, only for preparation for sale. And then the second condition, actually, that's number wrong, the second condition is on the south property line facing Thomas Street, the required trees will be placed every 10 feet versus every 40 feet. So we, again, listened very closely and moved forward with a very significant restriction. Next slide, please. Site does meet locational criteria for the comp plan. Goal three of the Sefner Mango Community Plan does look to concentrate commercial development and office development right along East Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Drive, which we are doing. Next slide, please. Proposal does provide growth in the urban service areas required under the objectives and future land use elements. The Sefner Mango Community Plan does support infill development and redevelopment within the urban service area. Next slide, please. Non-residential uses shall meet established location criteria for specific land uses. This site does meet criteria and objectives that I've indicated to you, including this directive, as non-residential uses, and we do meet locational criteria. Next slide, please. This is the zoning. You'll see there's a PD to the immediate east, which is a Walgreens store. And very importantly, Commissioners, next slide, please. We are bringing forward to you surrounding and unanimous support by the abutting property owners. No opposition to the west, no opposition to the south, and again, to the east is commercial use and zone CG. Next slide, please. We are located in a six-lane major arterial, 42,000 average daily trips. Thomas Street is also a 50-foot unapproved, well, partially improved area. Next slide, please. It's important that you know in the evaluation by the planning commission, and this is not a complaint, but we just want to make you aware that the planning commission does not take into effect letters of support, and that would affect this request because we did bring forward significant and substantial surrounding no opposition, but the planning commission does not use that in their evaluations. Next slide, please. So we are providing a six-foot PVC fence against a residential, which are in support or no opposition, four foot high in Thomas. There'll be an evergreen shade tree spaced every 10 feet versus 40 feet. This slide should have been changed. So we are basically doing four times planting density at the site. Next slide, please. So PGM recommendation relies upon the planning commission inconsistency finding in regard to transition, primarily regarding transition between uses. But again, we brought forward significant or complete no opposition from those users. Next slide, please. And next slide, please. Next slide, please. Goal and strategy for the comp plan is recognize the character of US 92 Martin Luther King Boulevard within the urban service area. And goal and strategy of the comp plan is support infill development and redevelopment within the urban service area, providing compatibility with existing uses. Next slide, please. And goal three, oh, we want, goal three, thank you. Commercial development should be directed to Martin Luther King Boulevard, which is what we're doing. Next slide, please. Good transitional use for the uses behind the proposed site. Next slide, please. Site again does meet locational criteria and does provide growth as indicated in Objective One. Next slide, please. So in summary, what's proposed under the CTR is extremely restrictive for use. We have complete strong residential support. We've not heard opposition from anyone through the many hearings. We're exceeding landscaping requirements. We believe the site is not conducive for residential. We have CG abutting. There are many comp plan and Sefner Mango Community Plan policies that do support and direct commercial on the site. So with that, Madam Chair and Commissioners, we appreciate your attention. Mr. Gray is here if you have any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I will call for proponent testimony. Anyone in support of the application? Proponent testimony? Opponent testimony? Anyone against? Anyone speaking against this? Opponent testimony?
We do not have anyone in the room.
Thank you. And I assume that the applicant will waive rebuttal?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I could not hear that.
Oh, I'm assuming that you'll waive rebuttal.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, if we can move to Planning Commission staff?
Sure, thank you. Madam Chair, this is Melissa Linehard with the Planning Commission. I did provide testimony at the last meeting on this item, which is part of the record. In lieu of going through all of those details line by line, I can just summarize our findings, which have not changed as of this meeting. There's policy direction in the future land use element with regard to gradual transition of uses, compatibility, and then also the site is in the residential plan category, residential nine, which limits commercial uses to commercial neighborhood uses. In addition, the community plan for Sefner Mango discusses policy direction about prohibiting commercial encroachment into residential areas, and this site has nearby homes that are adjacent to the west and also to the south. And based on those considerations, Planning Commission staff has not changed our finding. We have found this inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. And zoning hearing master recommendation?
Yes, the zoning hearing master considered this proposed rezoning to the commercial general with restrictions zoning district. As you heard from the Planning Commission staff, from Melissa Linehard, the Planning Commission does not support the request, finding that the subject property, while it meets commercial locational criteria, other factors regarding compatibility and transition of uses resulted in a finding of inconsistency. The zoning hearing master found that the property is bordered by property zone RDC 12 to the west and south across Thomas Street. The parcel directly across the street is own planned development and development with an apartment complex. Immediately to the east is an existing retail drugstore zone PD, and the drugstore zoning conditions permit the redevelopment of the property with CG uses only if a traffic analysis is submitted that shows the traffic generated by the proposed use is consistent with the existing drugstore traffic. The zoning hearing master found that the restrictions proposed by the applicant do not limit the property use to a single or limited number of uses, rather permitting a wide range of CG commercial and retail uses. As you've heard, the zoning, the applicant has modified its proposed use restrictions, as Mr. Grady had explained. The zoning hearing master's findings of record, however, was that although the property meets commercial locational criteria, the request does not provide for the necessary consistency with the comprehensive plan, and the zoning hearing master did recommend denial.
Thank you. And with that, we will move to board discussion. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. So the first time this came, our concern was that it was not, it was presented as a commercial general restricted, but the restrictions were very thin, too minimal. They only agreed that it wouldn't be a blood plasma shop and wouldn't be adult usage. So now there's, I just, can you help me find the, all I see now for restrictions are that they've added is that if it's a car wash, it'll be with, in conjunction with car sales, and if there's vehicle repair, it'll be in conjunction with the car sales, and there'll be no open storage. Is that all that's been added?
Commissioners, it's actually been restricted further by the applicant since the continuation. The applicant has offered a restriction on the use to only allow domestic vehicle sales. The cleaning and the minor repairs on autos would be associated only with those autos that are offered for sale. So that's the only use that's being requested. And this is a difference from what we had originally seen and went to the ZHM. We note in our report that the restrictions would not have precluded such high-volume uses as fast food restaurants and convenience stores. So the scope of uses has been narrowed down to just that single sale of domestic vehicles use.
Thank you. And if I could ask the Planning Commission staff about this, since the Planning Commission's objections was based on the incompatibility of the uses that would have been allowed, now that the uses are restricted to only a car sales lot, is the Planning Commission, I'm a little confused, is the Planning Commission telling us, well, we are stuck with our previous recommendation because it wasn't remanded, so we're not reviewing the new restrictions? Or is the Planning Commission telling us, even with the new restrictions, we still think it's incompatible?
For the record, Melissa Linehard, Planning Commission staff, I can certainly clarify that. It is the latter. We have considered the further restrictions offered by the applicant, and based on policy direction, residential plan categories, they are limited to neighborhood commercial uses, and this is a commercial general use, even though it is restricted to the one singular use, and the applicant is moving in the right direction. However, we still have our policy direction that we must honor. That is the gradual transition policy wherein in a commercial node, which this property is located in a commercial node, it does meet locational criteria. As you transition out, you know, to the edge of the node, the uses should be transitioning to less intense uses. In this case, there is a CG use on the corner, just a couple of parcels to the east, if memory serves, and then this should be toward the end of the node, we should be transitioning into more of the CN, potentially BPO uses, things like that. So less intense uses than CG uses. And then we also have the standing compatibility concerns because there are And then we also have the standing compatibility concerns because there are adjacent residential uses to the west and also to the south. Our staff report refers to a 60-foot distance, and I do believe that is the distance to the property to the south. It is separated by a local road, but those properties are very close to this. And then furthermore, we have the direction of the Sefner Mango Community Plan, which states that the commercial encroachment into residential areas is not supported and would not be part of that vision. Does that help to clarify things?
Perfectly, and I will be voting on...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I'll be voting along those lines. I am not persuaded by the fact that the applicant has been able to get a couple of neighbors to support the change because they may or may not be there forever, and the neighborhood will still be stuck with this incompatible use. So, I won't be supporting this application for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. And my virtual screen seems to be frozen, so I'm assuming that Commissioner White's hand is up from the time before. I can't seem to get it to unfreeze.
Madam Chair, it is up from the previous time, and I'll try to lower it myself.
Yeah, it just may be my screen. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. I've wrestled with this one. You know, it's okay to put a Walgreens block, you know, next door, but it's not okay to put a, you know, a car lot office with cars for sale in the back where we... They actually care for the cars so that they can sell them. Now, I'm never and have ever been a big proponent of car lots. They're not exactly my most favorite business living in my community. We spend a great deal of time changing that venue. But this honestly is Martin Luther King Boulevard, which is a quite substantial road. I don't know how I would want to actually live on Martin Luther King Boulevard at this location because it has become much more commercial than before. So, while I do appreciate many of the comments that have been made regarding from the Planning Commission and the guidelines, I think, given that there is a major... Not major road, but there's a decent road with a crosswalk that is approached by a turnaround lane already there, it somewhat indicates that this particular location is best utilized through a commercial use in some way, shape, or form. Whether it's this one or another one, it does seem as though that road would be the node termination rather than the one lot before where the Walgreens is. So, I'm very torn with this particular situation. I was actually going to support approving it because it does appear as though, based on what we've heard from the applicant, that the owners and the business are looking to do what they can to be sensitive to the fact that there are... It does back up to, you know, to neighborhood. Increasing the density of the trees, creating the fencing, minimizing the noise associated with what is typically a car mechanic shop. I mean, they're just actually working on the cars to make sure that they're fine. So, I would actually support a motion to approve, but I'm listening to everyone else to see where you stand on this.
Commissioner Colling?
Well, I find... I also think this is a difficult type of a case, but I do find I tend to agree with Commissioner Overman. I think that... And I think in this case, the applicant is doing what they can to be as restrictive as possible. But the... I want to speak for just a moment to the issue of the neighborhood support around it. Commissioner Smith is right, those people may not be there one day. But anybody that buys there is now on notice of what's there. And if there's going to be an effect on the value of the properties around it, the people that consented to support this application had to have taken that into account, I would assume, in not opposing it. I also agree that Martin Luther King in this area is, at this point, a commercial road. And the issue of what is the proper transition to the residential uses is a very, very delicate and difficult question, I think, to weigh. I would point out that there are a lot of places in the county where the... And in the city, where the roads are just as busy as this, and the transition to residential uses are far more abrupt and far more in-your-face. I think that the additional landscape buffer is helpful, and actually, I think the restrictions are pretty tight because if this business that is going there can't operate there, they've left themselves almost not open at all to anything else. So, for that reason, I think it should be support.
Okay, I see no further speakers. Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval.
Sec.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Cohen. Do we have any further discussion with regards to this?
Madam Chair, my hand's up, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have kind of a frozen... Oh, there we go. Maybe it did kind of unfreeze there. Okay, Commissioner Hagan?
Yeah, I'll keep my remarks brief. I mean, like Commissioner Overman and Cohen, I've gone back and forth on this one, but I do appreciate the additional restrictions on the uses and the fact that the buffer was increased significantly and the fact that there is no opposition to it. I'm going to support the motion to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, at this time, seeing no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Smith voted no.
Mr. Grady?
Madam Commissioner, Todd Pressman, just wanted to say thank you and also wanted to commend Brian Grady. We worked long and hard on this, and he's always great to work with. Thank you.
Commissioners, the next item is Agenda Item G3, rezoning application 20-1256 of the applicants' Suzu Lutz LLC. The project's located at 3223 East County Line Road. The request is for PD. The request is to allow landscape contracts or nursery plus 12 RV spaces for employees' farmworker housing. Michelle Heinrich will provide us a brief overview of the request. Thank you.
Good morning, Michelle Heinrich, Development Services. This is a rezoning of 9.57 acres from AS1 to PD to allow for a contractor... A landscaping contractor's nursery with associated seasonal residential uses. The site is located in the RES1 future land use category. A landscaping contractor's nursery is a conditional use in the present zoning of AS1. The project meets or exceeds those requirements, which address the size and mitigating for impacts to adjacent residentially zoned or developed properties. However, a landscaping contractor's nursery does not account for onsite residential beyond the property owner, and for that reason, the PD rezoning is necessary. The type of residential that would be associated with an agricultural operation would be categorized as farmworker housing, which in the RES1 future land use category can be provided on or off-site from the property it's serving. However, the housing units permitted for farmworker housing do not include RVs, which is the second reason for the PD rezoning. In this application, the applicant proposes 12 RV units to be used for workers associated with the nursery. When staff reviewed this against the farmworker housing regulations, the project does meet or exceed those requirements with the exception, of course, of the housing type, the length of stay, and the internal roadways. For those three, instead, the RV park regulations will be proposed. Most importantly, this does include limited time durations for those seasonal workers, and the residents must be employed by the nursery. The general area is within the northern border of the Lutz community with property to the north within Pasco County. Large lot, single-family residential is present to the north, south, west, and east. Most importantly, the RV park has been internally located with the nursery areas, ponds, and wetland areas around the perimeter of the project. An LDC required screening will also be provided. The RV park area is about 210 feet from the north, 216 from the east, 182 feet from the south, and 173 feet from the west. And again, along the perimeter, there are areas that provide intervening uses, such as the nursery areas. Planning Commission staff has found the project to be consistent with the plan, and no objections from reviewing agencies were received. Therefore, staff does recommend approval, subject to conditions, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. And with that, if we can hear proponent testimony? I'm sorry, the applicant's... Sorry. If we can hear the applicant, is applicant present?
Commissioners, good morning. William Malloy, 325 South Boulevard, Tampa, Florida. I'm going to try and keep this very simple. We're... I believe in a little bit of procedural limbo on this one. It has all recommendations of support and approval, but we did receive some opposition email back at the beginning of the year. I believe I've addressed all that opposition to this case, both on my own and through the zoning hearing master meeting. So, with that, I'd like to keep my time to answer any of your questions, and we very respectfully ask for your support on this case. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll go to proponent testimony. Anyone there to speak for this? Is there any proponent testimony? Is there any opponent testimony? Anyone speaking against this? Opponent testimony?
We do not have anyone in the room.
Thank you. And so, I assume at this time you'll waive your rebuttal, Mr. Malloy?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, and Planning Commission staff?
Thank you. Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. The subject property is located within the Residential One Future Land Use category. The site is located in the rural area and within the limits of the Lutz Community Plan boundary. The applicant is requesting to rezone the 9.5-acre site from Agricultural Single Family One to Plan Development. The intent is to allow for an existing landscape contractor's nursery with an existing building at 18,000 square feet and recreational vehicles which will be used for farmworker housing. The subject site is located in the Residential One Future Land Use category. And Objective Four of the Future Land Use Element of the comprehensive plan states that the rural area provides areas for long-term agricultural uses and large lot, low-density rural residential uses. The proposed uses are all agriculturally related, as the landscape nursery and building, including the proposed storage, will be related to the agricultural operation of the site. The proposed plan development is therefore consistent with the intent of Objective Four of the Future Land Use Element and its accompanying policies in the rural area. Objective 16 and its accompanying policies provide direction on achieving compatibility with surrounding land uses through various transitions, buffering, and site planning techniques. The applicant has provided several buffering and screening measures to mitigate for any adverse effects on the surrounding area. For the site plan, 4.39 acres is being reserved for the landscape nursery area along the southern and eastern boundary of the site, which will mitigate impacts to the residential in the area. Along the western boundary of the site, the applicant is proposing a six-foot-high opaque fence. Policy 1.4 of the Future Land Use Element states that compatibility does not mean the same as, rather, it refers to the sensitivity of the development proposals in maintaining the character of existing development. In this case, the proposed uses are in keeping with the character of the rural area, and the activities of proposed uses are compatible with the surrounding land uses. Group orders, temporary housing, and other residential structures for the use of permanent and/or temporary farmworkers may be permitted in areas of agricultural activity. This provision is intended to preserve and promote agricultural uses by making it possible for farmworkers to both work and reside on or near property devoted to agricultural uses. The proposed development meets the intent of Future Land Use Element Policy Direction located in 20.7. The request is consistent with the vision of the Lutz Community Plan by developing and supporting existing agricultural uses. Based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed plan development consistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County, subject to the conditions proposed by Development Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoning hearing master recommendation summary?
The zoning hearing master considered the request to rezone 9.83 acres from AS1 to Plan Development to permit a landscaping contractor's nursery with associated seasonal residential uses. The proposed zoning conditions limit the number of units of residential uses to 12 recreational vehicle units. The zoning hearing master stated that the property was previously approved for a conditional use for 12 farmworker housing units. The applicant's representative testified that the operator made a mistake in believing that the housing units could be RVs under that approval. Therefore, the property was signed by code enforcement for those units. If the rezoning to Plan Development is approved, this violation will be resolved. The Planning Commission, as you heard, does support the request and found it consistent with the Lutz Community Plan. The zoning hearing master noted that one person testified in opposition to the request at the hearing. Concerns were raised regarding the need to have onsite farmworker housing, given the size of the property. The person who spoke did say that they supported the development of a nursery. The testimony in opposition was provided by an adjacent property owner to the west. The zoning hearing master considered the proposed site design and fencing and found that this will ameliorate any negative impacts of the proposed RV units. The zoning hearing master found that the request serves to recognize the previously approved 12-unit farmworker housing units and does provide a compatible land use. The zoning hearing master recommended approval.
Thank you. And with that, we're now to board discussion. And Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
I have a question of the applicant. Is that all right?
Sure.
Mr. Malloy? Well, I want to ask about how the septic will be handled. This is outside the urban service area, and being that these are RVs, which typically have kind of a temporary hose system to be moved from place to place and hooked up to tanks somewhere, I want to ask... And given that these are already there, they've already got these RVs on site and they're using them now, I mean, how is that sewage being handled from the RVs?
Commissioner, it's my understanding that the location of the RVs is... Well, per our site plan, it's centralized and it's set. There's a particular place in the project that the RVs can be. Otherwise, they're out of zoning compliance. And there's an existing set of facilities there, which are handling whatever waste and wastewater the RVs produce right now. So, without being too particular about it, it's centralized and it's effective as it is, and I am confident that Development Services would not let us get into any kind of situation where we're doing something untoward with the waste or the management of it. I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, one follow-up, if I may. So, do the RVs move to a septic emptying tank like they do in RV parks? Or are they all hooked up with permanent hoses to some central package plant?
It's my understanding that there's a central, for lack of a better word, dock, so to speak, for the RVs. That there's one place where they go to hook up, and that's it. And again, with this plan, they'd also be set into particular spaces. So, each space for an RV should be equipped to properly handle any waste.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gormley, do you have anything to add on that?
Just to add on, from this site is currently... It's operating now, but it's seeking approval for this hybrid of landscaper contractor, nursery, RV, and farmworker housing. So, if the time of... If this zoning were approved, it would need to come in for permitting, at which time we would apply our wastewater requirements that it have a septic system permitted by the Department of Health for the disposal of the waste from the RVs.
Thank you. Let me tell you... Let me tell you, I've, I've seen farmworker housing in South County with wastewater sewage issues, all right, third-world kind of issues, and sanitation issues. And so I have, I just have a little bit of heartburn. I mean, the, this hybrid thing with RVs will also come with a requirement of short stays. They can't stay there, the residents, the farmworkers can't live in these RVs more than 120 days. I don't know who's gonna, you know, what, what's gonna happen there? They kick them out every four months and, or threaten to, because farmworker, agricultural workers, you know, they're not often in a position to call code enforcement to complain about things. And this could be the, the greatest thing for farmworker housing in spick and span RVs, or it could, like so many farmworker housing places, deteriorate into really terrible living situation with poor sanitations owned by their boss as their landlord. So I, I'm just worried for the tenants of this place, and if we do approve it, I just want to go on record saying I would, you know, this is a new thing. This is a hybrid thing, and I would, I would just like to ask our county to be really careful about the next step of, of permitting and the inspections and ongoing inspections to make sure that this little experiment works as intended. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Overman?
Thank you. And I actually have similar concerns as a new owner of an RV. Finding services to have it emptied out when I had a family come, a family member come for less than a month, found that without those services, it was problematic. So I was going to ask staff to help me in defining on, in item where it's discussed in the Planning Commission that all farmworker housing shall provide adequate sewage disposal and water supply systems that meet all federal, state, and local requirements. I am concerned about federal and state, but at the end of the day, do we have, you know, a 30-day pump-out service requirement if they aren't actually hooked up to a, you know, their own sort of sewage system, which doesn't sound like that's what's here? It sounds like they're looking to make RVs work because they're temporary, but 120 days is not a, you know, that's a long enough interval that it's going to take monthly maintenance and inspection and/or care by the owner-operator of the facility in order to maintain sanitary housing. So can you help, can someone help me with what our local requirements are to make sure it's very clear to not only the applicants, but potential workers that, that will live there, and those around the county that are living in RVs or trailers that need that kind of local requirement? Could you help with that?
So Commissioner, in particular with this development, is this is, this is a, this is a housing unit that is, that is being provided by an RV. So that, that's an atypical arrangement. So we would apply to this at the time it come, if it is approved, time it comes in to develop, we would apply our concurrency standards that, for the rural service area, require connection to a septic system permitted by the Department of Health and provide a, our typical requirement would be potable water or well water, and in this case, look to have a, a requirement for, hook up for well water to the site being in the rural service area. But both of those are requirements that, that are code requirements for permitting beyond, that are in addition to the restrictions that, that the applicant is requesting through the PD development. So we would look at that at the time, for this existing condition to, if this were approved, to come in and, and move from a state of noncompliance to compliance, it would need to go through that permitting review, and we would ensure that there are septic hookups for those RVs and not leave it that, the, the waste accumulates and, and to be disposed of through some other means. We would look to have, ensure that there is an onsite method permitted by the Department of Health for the disposal of that.
Sewage.
Waste sewage, yes.
And, and that's why I ask, because RVs typically, you know, are serviced by, you know, the services that come through to pump out an RV, because they have retention tanks, typically, because they travel all over the place, right? They don't typically hook up to a septic system unless there's a special service. So since this is an anomaly, I'm trying to understand how we are going to assure, and I think you've, you've given us greater detail, so that's, I appreciate that, but how we assure that those RVs are, have some sort of maintenance schedule or maintenance requirement that, that may or may not be included in this application. And that's what I'm trying to discern, is are we permitting something that has a second step for approval, which it sounds like it, at permitting? But, but if we haven't really understood what that looks like, or haven't gotten clear what the, you know, item 4.4 addresses, which is all farming housing, farming worker housing shall provide adequate sewage disposal and water supply. I understand the well service, but I'm asking about the sewage disposal, which means all federal, state, and local requirements. So if we're doing that now, it would be good to know what that looks like, because if, if it's an RV versus a mobile trailer, are the rules the same? Are the, is, are the requirements the same? And are we requiring that for this particular approval?
Yes. For, for this one, we're going to require that when the site develops, it, it has a septic hookup for, for each RV permitted by the Department of Health. And we've done these in other places where there's RV, places where RVs are going to stay, there, there are hookups for that, so that, so there's, there's a meth, onsite method of, of discharging the sewage from the item into a Department of Health permitted septic system.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. That answers my question.
Okay. I see no further questions, and I don't believe we have a motion.
We'll move approval.
Commissioner Overman made a motion.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Cohen, and once again, I have to, we have to do land development code trivia, and I have a feeling I know who would win. At any rate, with that, we have a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Cohen, and if we could have a roll call, please.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
Mr. Gredees?
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Agenda Item G4, Major Mod Application 21-033. This is a major modification to the existing plan development. Commissioners, this was before you, a couple of land use meetings ago. The request was, is to add the allowable use of a land excavation to the site they did receive prior to the zoning coming forward, a special use permit from the land use hearing officer for the land excavation for, with that being contingent upon approval of the use allowance through this major mod application. At the time, they were, through this special use permit, they were permitted approximately 2.5 million cubic yards of excavation to be taken off-site. At the last, at the prior board meeting, there was discussion about restricting that or that to that which would be necessary for excavation of the retention ponds for the approved residential development that's associated with the plan development during the, during the time from the last continuance. Staff had discussions with the applicant and their engineer to determine what would be that amount. That has been determined, and we have a revised condition in the backup which would restrict ing total, total excavation off-site of 1,075,000 cubic yards. Furthermore, it's further specifying the exact amount for each of the three ponds shown in the plan. Go to the LML, I'll point those out to you, as in the conditions. The conditions would basically, this pond, which is identifying the condition as Pond Inn, would be limited to 7,000, 759,000 cubic yards. This pond, which is identified as the Pond Southwest, would be limited to 78,000 cubic yards. And then this pond, which is identified as Pond SE, would be permitted a maximum excavation of 238,000 cubic yards. And those three items total 1,075,000 cubic yards. So that is a revised condition that's before the board as far as the application. Staff, if you have any questions, thank you.
Commissioners, I'll just add on this one, that, that we did look at the numbers that were provided by the applicant, both for the, for the ponds and what would be the ultimate design depth of the ponds, and we are in agreement with those numbers provided being the, the, the amount necessary to dig from the bottom of the pond to the existing grade for those three pond locations. Further, I want to add that the, there was some discussion about the length of the excavation operation. The special use has a, an existing allowance for a five-year excavation time subs, after the operating permit is issued. In speaking with the applicant, they have, they have agreed that they would, given the, the limited amount of material to be excavated, that they would be agreeing to a limit of three years instead of five years for that excavation activity to, to, to commence and finish after issuance of the operating permit. So just wanted, that's not included in the conditions, but I did speak with the applicant's representative who confirmed that there would be an agreement with that additional restriction for this application.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move to the applicant.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hill Ward Henderson. Adam is correct. We are in agreement with the revised condition limiting the volumes to only that which is necessary to excavate the lakes on-site and also limiting the duration to three years. We feel strongly that the record supports that the conditions of the special use permit mitigate any potential impacts to the surrounding area. Our engineer, Kyle Thornton, is here if there are any questions, and with that, I'd just like to respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. And at this time, do we have any proponent testimony? Any testimony in support of this? Proponent testimony? Do we have any opponent testimony? Any testimony against this?
We do have some people in the room.
Thank you. So if we can have those people move to the mic and identify themselves, they have a total of 10 minutes together.
Good afternoon, County Commissioners. Buddy Harwell, Baum, Florida. On behalf of the Baum Civic Association, we're here again to ask for your denial. Back in April's meeting, it seemed like you, it was on a decision to deny this, but to allow them to, to dig the retention ponds, but yet they're still asking for a land excavation permit. Adam Gormley stated several times in documents that land excavation is not permitted in a PD. So why are we, why are we back here again going through all this? And I, and I want to ask, have you ever had an application or a PD come before you and ask for land excavation just to dig out the ponds to take it off-site? This seems like the first one that I've heard of in the last three or four years that I've been dealing with all this. They are exceeding the, the limits. The only, there's one document here that was... Yep. I'll get it straight here in a second. But as you can see on there, the applicant said 1,075,000. On this report, it's asking for 1 to 1.5 million cubic yards and digging down 25 to 30 feet below seasonal high water. And the, the lower thing right here, you can see that the minimum standard is eight feet below seasonal standard, and they're going 40 to 50 feet, so that's a three to a five-fold beyond the pond excavations. Right here, you see Mr. Luce, and one of his things, he acknowledges that they are going deeper than otherwise needed for a single-family development. So this brings me to this question. Back in December of 2019, the applicant did apply for a natural resource permit to, to haul off the minimum 10,000 cubic yards of dirt off-site without the excavation permit, which we have witnessed them, February of 2020, they did, July of 2020, actually, February 5th, Mr. Fisk, which is here, is going to testify in Iowa, putting out our, our signs and notice the trucks leaving the, the site. But we also noticed trucks coming back in, loaded, and we followed these trucks, and they went down to South Fork, dumped the load from the grove, moved over 100 feet, filled it up with dirt, brought it back to the grove, and then saw it dumped in there. So this was witnessed several times in February 2020, several times in July of 2020 by me personally. So we're just trying to figure out what the, the purpose is. Excavation is an excavation. Ponds are ponds. So, I mean, it's going to be great impact on the community, the wells, like the big discussion was last time, so we still ask for your deny on this. Let them dig the ponds. They don't have to go down that far in that much dirt. They also have a piece of property right across the street, same area, but they have not asked for an excavation to haul the, the dirt off-site for the pond. So why does this piece need to be dug out and exported and the other piece not? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any one else there? Any further?
My name is...
Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Glenn Fisk. I live at 14635 Sweat Loop Road. It's in Baum, actually, even though Hillsborough County says it's Wyomma. But anyway, my objection to this is the lack of policing of the dust that comes from these trucks going in and out. I haven't seen a water truck there ever, and I'm not sure if there's anything that the county should be policing, though it is a rule. You don't know if they're really following it unless you police it. But also, I'm, I'm also against the fact that I haven't seen them deduce, deduct, rather, the number of homes for what they're displacing this dirt from. Seems to me every acre, they should drop two houses, and I haven't seen anything declare that they're going to be doing that. So far, that's my two objections still, and I don't see them getting around that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Al Bruner, 15006 Carlton Lake Road. I'm with Buddy and the previous speakers against this in a, in a housing development. We don't need, we already have five major dig sites. We don't need, we already have five major dig sites, three defunct with Mosaic, and then Razorback Ranch is the active mining. We don't need any more impacts to our well water, aquifer, potentially adding to the contamination of the water and the overexposure of the water to service contaminants, evaporation, when we already have existing water restrictions. The depth is, I have a big concern about that impact to the well, and it's already affected my springs that feed my pond. I do appreciate the reduction in the size. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Commissioners and county staff, thanks for letting me speak. Jamie Franklin, 15064 Baum Road, downtown beautiful Baum. I've got several things to say here, but one of them is, if they do get approval for this thing and dig this as deep as they want to dig it, who is going to pay for the new wells when they are going to be starting to go bad? Does the county pay for these wells? We need to investigate this. Developer pay for the wells? Need to know right up front because this is going to happen. To start with, if they're going to make a pond, a holding pond or a lake, and make their property worth more money, I don't blame them, why does it have to be over 10-foot deep? If somebody falls off their boat out there, we're going to have scuba divers going down 40, 50, 60-foot looking for them? That's not going to work. Another thing is, if they do dig these ponds, to keep the water sucked out of them, they got to have these big diesel pumps running 24/7. I live across the street. I only have one thing in my favor. My wife died last month.
Is that the last speaker?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And with that, the applicant has five minutes for rebuttal.
Kami Corbett for the applicant. I think there's a lot of confusion amongst the opponents to this application. I'd like to ask Kyle Thornton to come up and explain the depth of the ponds and the volumes very briefly, and then I'll address a couple of other comments.
Hello, Kyle Thornton with half 1,000 North Ashley, Suite 900. The pond depths as designed are only eight feet. The 1,000,000 cubic yards is, as reviewed by the county staff, is based on the eight-foot depth, and the 25 to 30 is just stating that's what normally would be dug, but it's been reduced to only be eight feet.
Thank you. Kami Corbett again for the record. Mr. Harwell is correct. This is the first time that we've had to come back and ask for land excavation as part of a P D. We made that record clear at the case below and at the board hearing last time. However, staff has changed its position and is now requiring us to add this as an approved use, so we are doing so. The testimony and evidence regarding Mr. Lutz saying the ponds are being dug deeper than necessary for subdivision, that was at the prior hearing before we reduced the volumes and the depth of the ponds for the proposed condition for today. That wasn't in relation to what the conditions are that we are agreeing to today. Also, a lot of the information that came in from the opposition was new evidence, not previously in the record, specifically issues relating to the natural resource permit. And so just for the record, I'd like to object to that. But again, we are in agreement with staff's limited condition that limits the volumes and the depths of these ponds, and they are consistent with building a subdivision, and we would respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. And at this time, we'll move to Planning Commission staff.
Thank you. Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. The subject property is located within the residential Plan II Future Land Use category. The site is located in the rural area and also located within the limits of the Baum Community Plan and the South Shore Area Wide Systems Plan. The applicant requests to modify an existing planned development, 18-0304, to allow land excavation as an additional use. The site is currently approved for 356 single-family residential units and 497 square feet of retail uses to be developed in a planned village concept per the requirements of the RP2 Future Land Use category. The planned development consists of two non-contiguous parcels with the northern portion, the Rodine Borrow Pit in the Riverview Community, and the southern portion, the Grove, which is located in the Baum Community. The addition of the land excavation as an additional use is only being proposed on the Grove parcel. No modifications are being proposed for the Rodine Borrow Pit portion of the site. Adding land excavation as an allowable use will mean that the site will be subject to Special Use Permit 19-1026 for a land excavation, which was approved in August of 2020. With this special use application, the applicant requests a waiver to the setback between the excavated area and the residential zone properties. Policy 1.4 of the Comprehensive Plan describes compatibility as the characteristics of different uses or activities or design which allow them to be used, I'm sorry, allows them to be located near or adjacent to each other in harmony. A condition restricting operating hours as well as the applicant moving to the haul route to have less of an impact on the residential development pattern will help to mitigate impacts consistent with this policy direction. This major modification application is also consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies with the conservation and aquifer recharge element of the Comprehensive Plan, ensuring that the land excavation is appropriately reclaimed. This application supports the vision of the South Shore Area Wide Systems Plan by adhering to the designated truck routes to operate land excavation. Based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed modification consistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County, subject to the conditions proposed by Development Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoning Hearing Master Recommendation Summary.
The zoning hearing master considered the applicant's request for major modification to Plan Development 18-304, as most recently modified by Major Mod 191172, to modify the Grove parcel of this plan development by allowing land excavation as a permitted use. The zoning hearing master stated that during the special use permit process, the land use hearing officer heard and considered issues of water transportation and cumulative impacts of borrow pits before approving the special use application. This requested major modification to allow land excavation for late creation on the Grove parcel is found to be compatible with the surrounding areas, subject to the conditions set out in the Development Services Staff Report. The zoning hearing master stated that the requested major modification to allow land excavation for late creation, subject to the condition set out, the conditions, excuse me, set out in the Development Services Staff Report, is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. The zoning hearing master found that overall, the major modification request is in compliance with and furthers the intent of the Comprehensive Plan and recommended approval of the request.
Thank you. And with that, we're going to move to Board Discussion Commissioner Overman. You're recognized.
Thank you. And I did have some similar somewhat questions, but in looking at the site plan, it sounds like this is what this excavation permit is required to create what are not just retention ponds, but ponds for this community. Is that accurate? Is that what we're trying to do here, is create three ponds for this particular community?
These, yes, Commissioner, these will be wet ponds. They will be, they will serve as retention ponds, but also, I believe, can serve as a pond amenity within the development. They're intending to stay filled with water.
Yeah. I mean, one of them looks large enough to be a lake, and the other two look like they would be relatively recreational type of ponds, as well as retention for the area. So am I to understand that the excavation for this particular permit will be limited to create the ponds?
That, yes, that is correct. And just to confirm something that was said earlier, that the depth of those is the eight feet above seasonal high water level. So that is the metric that we use to confirm the volume number, so that those deeper numbers were not part of our calculations.
Well, seasonal high water around here has a lot of variance, you know? You know, it depends on whether you're looking at February or this last month for some strange reason, or, you know, in August. And that can be anywhere, depending on the size of the water mass, you know, anywhere from four to feet to 10 feet, depending on the time of the year. So I'm trying to understand, based on the adjustment for seasonal high water, what would be the maximum depth? Eight feet? Is that what you're suggesting?
It's eight feet below seasonal high water. Based on the topography of the site, there'll be different depths at the top of berm for each of the ponds. For the north pond, it'll be 11.5 feet above, below the top of berm, and for the southeast and southwest, it'll be 12 feet.
So we're coming up several feet in order to get no deeper than eight feet. I think that's where the residents may have some concern about their wells, is, you know, if, we're talking about 11 feet from the level of the berm, as long as the berm's up four or five feet, then that seems not, I mean, that gets close to the eight feet maximum depth. But that's not the way it's described. If the ponds, or retention ponds, or lakes, or whatever the terminology that we're utilizing for these threes, you know, illustrations on this plan, is not going to go any further deep than eight feet, which is not typically competing with a well. A well typically is deeper than that. That's what I'm trying to get clarification of, and I'm sure that's what the residents would like to get some clarification. And I'm not sure why it would take three years to dig out three ponds, but if that's what they're suggesting, just because of the process of the development, rather than, you know, that's the other issue. It's not going to take three years for that to happen, it's just the process of development proceeding forward, it would need that range of time for preparing that particular land for the pond. And that's what I think, if we could get some clarification on, you know, typically if we're building three lakes or three ponds or whatever we want to call these, I wouldn't imagine it taking three years. But if the applicant can kind of give us an idea of what they've estimated the amount of time, that would give the residents in the area some sense of how long they're going to have to deal with trucks going in and out. And I think that's one of the concerns of the residents in the area and what they have to deal with as this permit gets approved. Anybody answer that one?
Commissioner, my understanding, and I can't speak to the actual developers' plan on this, but that three years is an outside window that is calibrated to their potential phasing for the development of the site, to finish the development, because each, sorry, each piece will have its area where stormwater goes. So as one piece develops, there's a stormwater pond for that, another piece will have another. So I believe that that, up to three years, is to accommodate the phasing of the development, not necessarily three continual years, but it doesn't preclude it.
I was going to say, as long as that's pretty understood by not only the developer and the communities, as far as expectation, that seems reasonable, because we don't know how long it'll take for these three different segments to get developed. I would just advise the developer to get on it and bake the ponds and do it as expeditionally as possible.
I just wondered if the applicant wanted to...
Address that issue, yeah. If they would like to respond to that, I would surely listen if they're willing.
Kami Corbett for the applicant. I think Adam described it very well. It is the phasing and sequencing of the development in the different sections, so we don't have anything further to add on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And that's all the questions I really had. It does appear as though this is what's necessary to create the ponds. And under these circumstances, are we going to anticipate that every time we need a retention pond for any development, we're going to deal with this special use process?
So Commissioner, the way that this came in is it came in the door with something more than necessary to dig the ponds. I think that, you know, were it, and, you know, as the applicant and others have stated, this is the first time that this type of issue has come to the board. We have, we have limits on how much can come off of a site of up to 30,000 cubic yards if there's a, if there are construction plans. So anything above that amount will require a land excavation special use permit. It doesn't necessarily follow that the zoning needs to be modified to authorize that special use. It depends on what that, what that activity is. In this case, we had a zoning approved with certain amount of entitlements and certain uses. Then the special use came subsequently that was, that was seeking to take more than necessary to develop the project, and based on that fact set, determined that the planned development would need to recognize that additional use because it went beyond what was necessary to develop the site. So now that the board hears, will be hearing, land excavation special use permit requests, you may hear them, but not necessarily in the same context as a modification to the zoning. It's more on the special use permitting side when you have a scenario where to develop what's approved on the site, more than 30,000 cubic yards needs to come off.
Thank you, and thank you for your explanation, but that's why I asked the question, because it's one of those circumstances where if it's necessary to create retention, water retention on a piece of property, and then each time it requires a special use permit, that's going to be interesting, to say the least. But in this particular case, the reason this one continued in that path was largely because it's in excess of what would be normal for just a retention pond, because they're creating basically ponds and lakes in this particular case. So I just want to get clarification from the applicant. In this particular permit request, the amount of soil that will be taken out of the borrow pit and the related, off the development property, is directly related to the creation of these three water features for this development as it stands right now? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That is, based on our review and evaluation, that is what is necessary to dig those ponds at that, at that design depth, which we're in agreement with. And in particular, you know, this site has some significant, sorry, again, significant topography to it. So there is dirt on top of those, on top of those areas that will ultimately be the top of pond. But to short answer the question, yes, it's confirmed that this is, this is what is necessary to come off, to dig the retention ponds that were approved in the planned development zoning that's on the property currently.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. And I want to thank the citizens of Baum for continuing to watchdog these issues. They're very important. I've lived in neighborhoods heavily impacted by this kind of, the kind of excavation we've been allowing in this county, and it's really important to hear from the community about what their concerns are. In this case, I think, I think we can consider it a win in, in working together on this to make it better. I, when this first came, I moved denial. I was vehemently opposed, but in the discussion with staff, understanding where we are in this specific process, I agreed to the motion for deferral so that we could tighten this up in the way, in the very way that it's been tightened up now. The crux of the matter here, well, let me, the crux of the matter here is that they're, they already have a special use permit that allows the excavation... they already have a special use permit that allows the excavation in the very ways that this community is alarmed about and that I was alarmed about. So their special use permit allows them to go up to 2.4 million cubic yards, even though their ponds only need a little over a million. And their special use allows them to go much deeper than the standard eight feet, 25, 30 feet-ish or more, in this, more, in their special use permit. And now with this process in this PD, we've been able to restrict that to the standard for ponds of eight feet. These, also, you know, the special use excavation permit allowed five years, and this is restricting it to three. So if we were not to pass this item today, I mean, that would leave them still with the special use permit. So I think we've come, and thanks largely to the community involvement for bringing up these very specific concerns to us, I think we've come to a really good place of having these ponds limited to what it would take to develop the site and, you know, making a bad situation better. So I, you know, and I will just also point out, we have been addressing this issue of developers asking for excavation permits, in fact, mining operations within residential neighborhood areas. And as Commissioner White pointed out last time, you know, this didn't used to be an issue. We would be doing mining far from, or excavation far from residential areas. And now it's becoming a more common practice for developers to want to use their lakes as mining pits. We do have now a land, we were amending the land development code. Have we approved that, or is it still transmitted?
Yes.
We adopted a new change of the land development code so that these kinds of permits, special use permits for excavation will no longer be happening off in some behind-the-scenes special use with just as land use hearing officer, but will be coming one by one to this commission where the public can be engaged. And I encourage all the citizens to continue to be engaged as we, you know, examine and review any other requests for excavation permits. And we are also, board members, in the process of amending our comprehensive plan. And some of those elements that we're looking at updating have opportunities for putting requirements and considerations for review in regarding this very thing. The comp plan does now say that these excavation permits for, should, or these excavation operations that are then going to be lakes should have a maintenance plan. I'm not sure that that's a reclamation and maintenance plan so that they would be functioning as real lakes. When they're too deep or the sides are too steep, they don't really function as ecosystems of lakes. The light doesn't get to the bottom for the same kind of growth as you would have in a real lake. The slides aren't sloped for waiting birds to interact with the little minnows or tadpoles in the way that they would in a natural lake. So, you know, this one will eventually, should eventually get that kind of reclamation plan. But, you know, I think that we might look at strengthening those requirements in our comp plan as well. Thank you. So I'm of approval because I think this is, this has made a bad situation good, or well, better. All right, thank you.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith and seconded by Commissioner Overman. And Commissioner Smith, thank you for those statements. Also, the citizens are so important and have been so critical to everything we've learned in the Baum-Wy-Mama area. As I had said before, I was a little surprised, having known the legacy of burrow pits, that somehow this had not changed a decade or two ago. So I think that the citizens of Baum coming forward on this particular item changed everything for the future in both the short term of this particular piece of property, but also the process that now moves out of the special permitting and into the board's discretion and will be looking at it far closer. I was really, as I expressed up here, a little shocked by the excavation allowances, permitting, and in the fact that it just moved forward in this way that we didn't even account for or know. And so now I think, as Commissioner Smith said, we'll also be looking at refining it in beneficial ways. So I think this is, makes for a huge change in the way we do things and move things forward and in this particular piece of property. And with that, I don't see any other, I don't believe, any other commissioner comments at this time. So if we could have a roll call vote?
Kemp.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Grady.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Agenda Item G5. It's rezoning standard application 21-0242. The applicants, Thomas and Emily Mayne. The request is rezoned from agricultural rural to CG with restrictions. The restrictions are limiting uses on the property, including uses restricted, including gas stations and fast food restaurants. Commissioners, this is before you with split recommendations. Development Service staff is recommending approval. The hearing officer is recommending approval. The planning commission is finding it inconsistent with respect to staff's recommendation. I'll refer to the Elmo area just to show the area and then identify the basis of our recommendation in the area. Parcel is located here on Waters Avenue, on the north side of Waters Avenue, west of the intersection of Hanley and Wilkesville Boulevard. As you'll note, it's along a commercial corridor where developed the property south, there's zone CG, property immediately west of the PD and the adjacent use immediately to the west of the convenience store with the gas station. Based on the, and you'll notice to the east, access road or a townhome development to the north, and then wetlands to further to the east. Based on the site characteristics and the use restrictions and the fact that code requirements regarding buffering and screening, which again, along the northern boundary, which would be the most impacted boundary, whether it's residential, the code does require a 20-foot buffer with a six-foot fence and trees planted on 20-foot centers. Based on the, again, the site characteristics that provide use restrictions and the requirements in the code to address compatibility with adjacent property owners, staff did find it approvable. Again, the hearing officer also did recommend approval, but the planning commission found it inconsistent. And should the planning official outline their reasons for their inconsistency finding in their presentation? Available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have the applicant present?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Tumai of HTMI Inc. Address is 14031 North Dale Mabry Highway, Tampa, Florida 33618. I'm here representing the applicant. The item in front of you today, as Mr. Grady stated, is to rezone a parcel from AR to CG restricted with the following restricted uses such as schools, drive-through banks, bowling alleys, drugstores, taverns, funeral homes, laundry mats, fast food restaurants, sexually oriented businesses, smoke shops, supermarkets, wedding chapels, ambient services, and gas station. The total land is 0.94 acres with a future land use of R9. It's located in northwest of Edgewater Place Boulevard and West Waters Avenue. We believe our proposed development meets the intent of policy 16.2. If you can see from this conceptual site plan, the applicant is proposing 20 feet buffer with a type B screening along the property north to the adjacent residentially zoned properties to the north, east, and west. Additional trees will be planted and staggered to fill any gaps for the existing trees and natural vegetation on the site. There is an existing eight-foot solid PVC fence along the west and north. In addition, the applicant is proposing a six-foot high solid PVC fence along the east property boundary. The solid PVC fence and trees will provide a natural buffer and privacy to the residential development next door. In total, there will be a proposed setback of at least 80 feet from the north property boundary adjacent to the apartments, to the proposed building envelope. We are also proposing a stormwater retention pond along with a 20-foot buffering, thus providing additional separation from the northern property boundary. In addition, the proposed building will have a setback of at least 20 feet from the east property boundary. These factors, along with the proposed restricted uses, we believe provide a gradual transition of intensities between different land uses. As Mr. Grady stated, this site, this site is uniquely, is unique because it is zoned AR amongst CG and PD zoned properties. If you can look on the Elmo, all the areas that are highlighted in yellow are commercial uses. Adjacent to the west is a highly intensive use, which is Chevron gas station. Along the corridor, the West Waters corridor, there are extensive, are intensive uses such as auto repair shops. We believe that the proposed development would be in keeping with the Town and Country Community Plan for creating opportunities for small businesses, especially retail businesses, to thrive along the Hanley Road and West Water corridor. This area has a high concentration of Asian and Hispanic community. There is a growing population of minority-owned businesses along West Waters Avenue. By allowing this proposed rezoning and development, it would further encourage these hardworking populations to grow and contribute to the prosperity of the local economy. We did submit into record 98 letters of support for this petition. And to conclude, we respectfully request your recognition of approval. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, do we have any proponent testimony, those to speak in favor of this? Hearing, none. I'll move to opponent testimony. Anyone to speak against this?
There is no one in the room.
Thank you. I assume the applicant will waive rebuttal?
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll move at this time to Planning Commission staff.
Thank you. Melissa Leinhardt, Planning Commission staff. The subject property is located within the residential nine future land use category. The site is located in the urban service area and also located within the limits of the Town and Country Community Plan. Objective 16 of the future land use element and its accompanying policies require the protection of existing neighborhoods from new development and redevelopment of adjacent properties through various instruments such as buffering and screening. Future land use element policy 16.1 includes language about limiting commercial development and residential land use categories to a neighborhood scale. The intent of this policy is to protect less intense uses, such as residential uses, and to locate more intensive uses in appropriate locations. The site is on the edge of a commercial node where uses should be transitioning to less intense usage according to the comprehensive plan policy direction. A rezoning to CGR would not support this policy direction. This rezoning does not meet the specific criteria of future land use element policy 16.2, which identifies the use of gradual transitions of intensities between different land uses. The applicant has stated that the prohibition on uses listed are previously mentioned and the setbacks along the northern side of 80 feet and 20 feet on each eastern and western sides, as well as the utilization of landscape screening and a type B screening on the northern, western, and eastern edges, along with a six-foot PVC fence along the eastern boundary would allow for gradual transition between uses and fulfill the intent of this policy. However, zoning to, rezoning to CGR would still not provide for a proper transition of land use intensities between the adjoining residential and commercial general uses along Waters Avenue. Policy 16.2 states that professional site planning is also one of the methods used to achieve compatibility. As site plans are not submitted in this stage of the standard rezoning review process and take place after zoning approval when planning commission staff have conducted their review, there is unsatisfactory information to assess how the site will function as a whole with all of the proposed restrictions and mitigation measures. In this case, a planned development rezoning district is potentially a more appropriate zoning district. The current offered mitigation measures would likely not be able to achieve the degree of compatibility needed adjacent to existing residential uses. Furthermore, future land use element policy 16.5 restricts higher intensity uses along arterials away from established neighborhoods. Though the site is located along an arterial roadway, it is adjacent to residential properties, which presents a compatibility concern. Goal nine of the community design component calls for the creation of a commercial design standard and scale and design that complements the surrounding neighborhood. Several policies of the design component specifically call for the avoidance of any development of strip commercial and that any new commercial zoning be located at activity centers and commercial redevelopment centers. The community design component recognizes the need for development to be compatible, to be compatible with the existing character of the surrounding area, and development that is proposed in lower-density residential areas should utilize the planned development rezoning process in order to fully address all impacts of the existing community. The subject property does not meet commercial locational criteria. This criteria is based on the future land use category of the property and the classification of the intersection of roadways as shown on the adopted 2040 Cost Affordable map. Roadways listed in the table as two or lane, two or four-lane roadways must be shown on this map. Four intersections were analyzed to determine whether the subject property meets this criteria. The closest intersection to the subject property is Edgewater Place Boulevard and Waters Avenue. Edgewater Place is not on the map, and it does not meet the definition of a major local roadway for the comprehensive plan. A major local roadway must connect to at least two or more collector or higher roadways and/or be a primary access road to at least 500 dwelling units from a collector or arterial roadway. This parcel's location does not meet commercial locational criteria, and the applicant has submitted a waiver to this criteria. Their waiver has cited that commercial development patterns in the specific CG zoned properties north and south along Waters Avenue are appropriate for review. However, future land use element policy 22.7 states that commercial locational criteria is not the only factor to be considered, and that factors such as land use compatibility must also be considered. The site is adjacent to a CG zoned parcel. However, there are compatibility concerns with the proposed CG rezoning and the adjacent residential properties. The proposed rezoning does not support the vision of the Town and Country Community Plan as stated in Goal One, Goal Two, and Strategy One of the plan. These goals focus on creating opportunities for small professional businesses and specialty neighborhood retail in the town center along Hanley Road and Waters Avenue, as well as improving the appearance of the roadway corridor. The subject site is not located at either of the preferred town centers in the community, and a rezoning to commercial general restricted is inconsistent with the vision of the Town and Country Community Plan. And based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed rezoning inconsistent with the future of Hellsborough Comprehensive Plan or unincorporated Hellsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And the zoning hearing master recommendation summary?
The zoning hearing master considered the applicant's request for rezoning to the commercial general restricted zoning district. The applicant proposes to prohibit a number of uses through restriction within the CG zoning district uses. There's a pretty extensive list of uses that the applicant has agreed to prohibit, listed in the report. As you've heard, the Planning Commission staff does not support the request. The Development Services Department does support the request as it found that the properties to the west and south are developed with commercial uses, and that the property to the east and north is a town home development with access drive. The department further found that the size and depth of the parcel in relation to the neighboring commercial development is consistent with the existing zoning and commercial use pattern. The zoning hearing master found that the proposed restrictions to the commercial general zoning district will serve to project, to prohibit objectionable land uses such as those with drive-through windows adjacent to the town home community. The zoning hearing master further found that the existing screening combined with the proposed additional screening, which includes additional trees and fencing, will serve to mitigate the impacts of the development to the adjacent town home community. And the zoning hearing master recommended approval of the commercial general restricted rezoning request.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move to board discussion. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. And, uh, thank you for, for going through the, explaining the list. You know, when I'm looking through the notes on this particular property, seeing is that there's an agricultural rural on Waters Avenue at this point seemed a little odd. You know, it's like completely left out of the equation of the livable community elements of their community plan. I'm not sure that the Town and Country Community Plan expected rural development in that particular area, but clearly it's, it's somewhat of a, of a leftover. But that being said, Waters is an arterial, a county arterial road. While you could, given various different zoning changes, actually put a town home or an apartment complex on Waters Avenue, excuse me, which might be appropriate, you know, if it became a major transit corridor. But we haven't done that in our comprehensive planning as of yet. And one of the things, goals I have about our planning over the next year or several years is to address that issue. One second, please. Because of a development very similar to this, or what we're looking at, would seem completely appropriate. With that, I'll support the motion to move forward.
Motion by Commissioner Overman, I think you're making the motion. And a second, do we have?
For approval. Second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Myers. And I don't see at this time any further discussion to this motion. Please do a roll call vote.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. So, Mr. Grady, we're on the H segment of the agenda, correct?
Thank you. The next items are related items, H1A and H1B. H1A is an application to rescind the Crescent DRI number 208. And then the related item is H1B, which is a modification to the related plan development that's associated with the Crescent DRI. Through the modification of the PD, the conditions are being recalibrated to acknowledge removal of the rescission of the DRI, including making, removing references to the DRI, and also moving over approved development entitlements and a land use exchange that permits exchanging of entitlements based on caps on trips associated with those exchanges. The, the requirements for rescission of the DRI includes a requirement that all of the property owners sign off on the application, which has occurred. It also requires, you know, that all mitigation at the time of the, submitting of the application for the project has been completed, or, or the alternative is not required at the time of rescission. Staff has looked through the development order regarding required mitigation and has determined that, that all mitigation required as based on the development entitlements has occurred or not warranted based on the level of development. I'll point out on the aerial, this is the location of the development order. It's on Falkenburg Road, west, it's on the west and east side of Interstate 75 and also east of 301. On note, the properties on the east side of US 75 are in the DRI, but again, they're identified for open space and retention on the DRI site plan. The, the development entitlements associated with this project are on the west side of Interstate 75, which again, this aerial is actually the aerial which shows the boundaries of the zoning PD that's being modified through item H1B. Again, so the area on the east side of I-75 will remain as currently, they're currently zoned AR and will remain that zone and will not be, the zoning will not be changed or affected by the rescission of the development order. And again, this is the existing site plan for the PD site plan showing where the development titles are located. Again, staff is recommending approval of both H1A and H1B. They both require public hearings, and I believe you can act on both those concurrently after you hear from testimony from the applicant and from any public wishing to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move to the applicant. Is the applicant present?
Yes, I am. Hello, Commissioners. Adam Carnegie with StanTech, applicant's representative. The applicant is the Crescent Owners Association. And with me here, I just wanted to point out that we have Kevin McGrath, who is an agent, representative of the Owners Association. He's also with Progressive Insurance Company, which has a significant regional headquarters here within this project. My address is 777 South Harbor Island Boulevard, Suite 600 in Tampa. I have been sworn. I just wanted to, because this, neither of the applications had to go through zoning hearing master for fact-finding, I just thought it would be helpful to the commission if I share some facts about the history of this project and, and the, and the, and the, the applications, how the applications dovetail. So you should be seeing my screen. This is the, the location, as you can see, it's quite an urbanized area, and there are these two applications, which are your two agenda items back-to-back, and as Brian said, they're interrelated. The, the project here is shown in aerial view, and I just wanted to point out for you that it's substantially developed with the exception of this 9.67 acres here along I-75 in the northeast corner of the developed portion. And, and so this, this DRI, which, it's, the whole thing is 168 acres, was first approved in 1990. So this is a 30-year vintage project. It's substantially built out, and as I've indicated, Progressive has a number of buildings in this area. And I just learned even this morning that at the time of building of this building, foundations were laid for another building which may, may come into existence. So it's not only substantially built out, but poised for complete development. One of the things that you will learn in the, when we talk about the zoning in particular is that the land use exchange mechanism, which was, which is in the DRI, is also being ported over into the, into the companion PD, and that is important. Just a little bit of history, that land use exchange mechanism was used just once, I think, in the past, and that was to bring in a residential component into the project, which, which was developed ultimately in this northwest corner of the project and actually extends offsite. So it's a useful mechanism that may be used in the future, and so that's being brought in to the PD to update it. Here you see the development proposal, the approved development, it's been, as in the case of most DRI, it's been modified several times. But I wanted to just highlight something that's really not highlighted in the staff report, Commissioners. This you see, this column, you see the approved development, and then that which has been built. And just kind of focusing on this comparison table, you see that although only 48% of the entitlements has, have been built, some 700,000 of 1.5 million, only 7% of the land has, remains to be developed. This is not talking about the wetland systems and so on, but the actual acreage, because 93% of the development has been, as it were, consumed by a much lower building floor area at a substantially lower intensity than allowed. And in, in terms of the DRI, the DRI rescission statute says that if mitigation has happened, then the board shall rescind the DRI. But I just wanted to emphasize for the board that not only has the mitigation happened, but the mitigation, when it was designed, was addressing much larger impacts than have actually been experienced. And that, I think, is yet an additional kind of, you know, rationale for rescinding the DRI that I hope the board will continue, will consider. So we have these two applications, rescinding the DRI, and as staff has indicated, this section of the statute says, you know, it shall be rescinded based on the rescission, based on the mitigation having been completed. And we're going to modify the Crescent PD at the same time to make sure that things are appropriately dovetailed. Here's that statute. There were three areas of DRI mitigation, transportation improvements, which were completed. And I just also wanted to point out that this is a DRI where additional project development will be assessed mobility fees, and this is not vested under the impact fee criteria. So any new development, whether it's run exchange mechanism or just build-out of the project, would be required to pay mobility fees. The DRI required some surface water quality monitoring, which was dutifully done over the course of this 30-year period, and there were no modifications that were required. The stormwater system is functioning well. But even more importantly, as the Commissioners understand, the SWF mod ERP permit has a continuing maintenance obligation for the systems onsite, and so the presumptive criteria that were used to design the, the stormwater system have, in this case, proven over 20 to 30 years to be very, you know, effective at maintaining state water quality standards. That's why here I indicate that, you know, everybody's agreed that, look, these are redundant now, proven to be redundant requirements. The DRI had an affordable housing analysis, which was very broad and very vague. Point being, though, that threshold was never triggered. Why? Because the development has proceeded at such a lower intensity. This actually indicates that there were some 345 trips or 200, or no matter how you look at it, the number of trips that were generated fall far below the thousands, the 1 million square foot of office or equivalent trip generation threshold that was set to trigger that affordable housing analysis. And recall that the affordable, that the, the DRI exchange mechanism was invoked to bring in some housing which was not required initially. The application for plan development, since the two applications are really connected at the hip, I just wanted to cover that quickly in the interest of time, since we're approaching the lunch hour. You know, Brian has covered it well. We're just moving in the, the exchange mechanism and bringing the, the PD up to, up to current standards. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Ask for your approval on both of these items. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move to proponent testimony. Is there anyone present to speak to this, in support of this?
There's no one in the room?
So I assume there's no opponent testimony? No one present to speak against this?
We have someone in the room.
Oh, okay. Opponent testimony.
Good morning, the Commissioners. My name is Hadi Lashkajani, 450 Nice Run Avenue, Tampa, Florida. I, I'm opposing this, this project as proposed for several reasons. The first one is that it, this should really be a two-separate project. One should have nothing to do with the other. The one on the east side of the highway is very different than the project that's on the west side of the highway. The project on the west side of the highway, 12 years ago, when I applied, by the way, I own a property in that area, is 14 acres or so, and I own a flavor manufacturing company. It's a food additive company. 14 years ago, when I came to the Commissioner to, to ask for permission to change the zoning from agriculture to plan development, one of the Commissioners said, this is wonderful, that's the kind of businesses we need to have in that area. That area should not be a bedroom community. Now, it's on a Crescent Park side, and in that area, there's a lot of nice businesses that are there, and they should stay as businesses. The project proposing a lot of residential area, which I truly object to. The traffic is another issue that I think the traffic ultimately should be addressed, and that rose, that road in that area cannot support the amount of traffic that's going to be generated as a result of this development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we will move to rebuttal from the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioners. I, I don't know if there's been a misunderstanding, but there is nothing that we're asking the Commission to do today that would increase the number of residential units that could be developed on this property. Just a couple of facts, which I, one of which I covered previously. First of all, foundations have already been built on the remaining undeveloped portion for what is clearly a non-residential component. This is an important regional kind of campus for Progressive, and, you know, they are poised, should the right market conditions and right operation, operating conditions present themselves, to have the option to move forward to build additional non-residential office space within this project. Beyond that, the project will be built up. There was some multifamily development in the northwest corner of the project, partially within DRI boundaries, which has already occurred, and that gobbled up, I think it was 90 units of what would be 135 units of development potential. So very, very few residential units are still slated for possible development within the project, and one would have to come back to the Board of County Commissioners anyway if that were the case. The traffic impact analyses done with the DRI have served very well to project what the impacts were. Those impacts have, as I've pointed out, have been much less than expected, so we don't see this as having a traffic impact that you did not predict, that you did not fully mitigate for, and the mitigation was, of course, at a higher level than the actual impacts which were experienced. I think that covers the concerns raised by the speaker. If not, I'd be happy to answer the questions the board has.
Thank you. And at this time, we'll move to Planning Commission staff.
Commissioners, there's a planning commission report on these two items.
Okay. And do we have any, we don't have ZHM with this at all. Okay. Okay. With that, we'll move to board discussion. I see, no one.
Move approval of H1A and H1B?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, seconded by Commissioner Myers, and at this time, seeing no discussion, can we have a roll call vote? This is on both items, just to be clear.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. And we have one more item, an off-the-agenda item. Mr. Grady.
Commissioners, I'll address the, this off-the-agenda item. The off-the-agenda item is an item, a request- The off-the-agenda item is an item requesting board authorization and direction to draft an acquisition agreement for Estuary Lakes Drive. The board has heard, the prior board had heard some discussion about Estuary Lakes Drive in early 2020 that started with a minor modification to permit access to that drive and a subsequent discussion that spoke to the private nature of that drive and a desire to have public access potentially be, be provided to that road. The road is currently, it's actually currently a commercial drive. We have met with both the owner of that, of that road and the owner of a development to the north of that, that was the subject of the minor modification to provide access to that road. This meeting has resulted in a proposal for the county to acquire Estuary Lakes Drive with some pedestrian safety enhancements put on the road before we would take possession of it. The arrangement calls for basically a cost-sharing agreement. The current owner of the road does have costs sunk into it from the construction of the road and the provision of the land. What we're asking authorization to move forward with would be a, a contribution by the county of $500,000 in transportation impact fee offsets that were purchased back through the offset buyback program, so these are actual existing offsets, plus a $500,000 contribution or payment from the owner of the development to the north, which is Falkenburg Partners. The conditions of this acquisition would be that there's, currently, the road is, has partial sidewalks on it, and there are some developed portions that do not have sidewalks. We would require that sidewalks be provided on the western half of the, of the road where existing multifamily exists. There will be additional sidewalks that are provided on the southern side with out parcels that will be developed, and on the northern side with the Falkenburg Partners property developed that will be required to provide sidewalks at that time. So the net result of this will be sidewalks that, that goes basically from Estu, sorry, Falkenburg Road to Palm River Road, on, on both sides of the road with a small area on the, on the western side, northern side, northern side of the road on the west, where existing ditches and wetlands will, will preclude that, that installation. What we're asking again is to have direction to go off and draft the acquisition agreement. If the board agrees with that, we'll, we'll come back to this board with the actual acquisition agreement that would set forth the specific terms as generally laid out in the background and conditions for, for closing on the road. Available for any questions if the board has them. This has been a, quite an effort working with all the parties, and I say that there has been some ups and downs in this, but I think all the parties have come together and see the benefit of, of moving this road from its current situation to a publicly accessible, walkable connection between two major roadways in a, in a pretty developed part of the county.
Okay, with that, there are several hands up. I'm not sure quite what order, but I'll go to Commissioner White first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Gormley, at the end of his comments, mentioned how hard staff has worked on this item, and I just want to commend Adam and all of his staff and even, you know, up to the level of his superiors that have worked so hard on this. We've been working on it a long time. The issues that we've dealt with along the way have spanned across the realms of legal, policy, and business. But the bottom line is that if we're able to move forward, this would lead to an excellent infill development opportunity and spur growth in an area that is quite literally a stone throw from the Selma Expressway entrance. As I mentioned at the beginning, staff and stakeholders have worked very hard to bring an agreement to this board that makes sense. So therefore, I'll move approval of staff's proposal.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Hagan. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I'll keep my remarks brief. I want to echo everything Commissioner White said. I want to thank staff as well as both parties for working together to reach an agreement that is beneficial for nearby residents and businesses. This agreement provides connectivity that our board always preaches, as well as much-needed sidewalks are included. So just want to thank both parties and remind everyone that the actual agreement will come back to us for, for final approval, and so I'm happy to second the motion.
Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
I too want to thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I too want to thank staff for working together with this. This is a project that is in District 3, and I look forward to staff coming back to us with an agreement.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. And, and what's really great is that this is exactly what we were trying to figure out, and when we were talking about who owns what roads, who maintains what roads, and how we make it happen, that makes sense. This connects, you know, two major roads together through a community that's actually in the process of developing well, and I want to thank all of the parties as well as staff for finding a commonplace where the community can be well-served. So I'll stop there.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Just a brief comment to note that I was just out in this area and said, well, I want to take a look at this Estuary Lakes Drive, so I drove down it, and it was like a, I forget if it was a Tuesday or a Thursday, it was a weeknight around 7:30, so still a little light, and I was astounded at the number of people that were out strolling about, pushing a baby carriage, walking a dog, out walking on here, even though it's got no sidewalks, there is development occurring. The curbs are, are right there, and so I'm looking forward to having sidewalks and, and bike lanes in this area where we've got residential and commercial happening. So good, good work.
Okay. I see no further comments at this time. We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Hagan. Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay. And with that, I believe we have finished this agenda, and we are adjourned.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. What time do we need to do the first?